Call this meeting to order at 6:30 and we are down our chair Sam tonight. So I will be playing the part of Sam and also Jason, but otherwise we have a quorum. So we are good to proceed and please join me in the Pledge of Leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, upcoming meetings, we will have several committees on February 14th. Come celebrate Valentine's with us, Personnel Committee at 5:30, Curriculum Committee at 5:30. As a note, Curriculum Committee will be at the high school library. Finance at 6:30. The week of February 21st, we are on school vacation. And February 28th, Policy and followed by Budget Workshop, I believe will be at the high school library. Yes, okay, getting the yes. So any, moving on, any action? Consider any action relative to additions or adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to add to the agenda an update on the Bond Committee meeting that happened last night with possible action to follow.
All right, do we have any discussion? Any issue adding that to the agenda? All in favor? All right.
Thanks, Bonnie.
Fran?
I'd like to get an update on the HV, HVAC bond, where it's at. And if we put it out for RFP yet? So I would, and so I would have, the Bond Committee really didn't have room for that discussion. And so I'm kind of wondering what's going on with that at this time. Haven't heard an update in a while.
Okay, I think that that may fit under any, any news from that would come through Facilities Committee. So I don't think, we don't need to add as an agenda item, but we can look for information at the committee report.
I haven't.
You will? Oh, you're on Facilities, okay.
Yep.
All right.
No problem.
All right, and so how about we can, we'll add the bond topic. At the end, right? Follow Superintendent's report. Does that make sense? Or does it matter? I think we should stick it.
What about in the committee reports? Because it does include the Bond Committee in that.
Yeah, I think that's, that makes sense.
Okay, so we'll speak to that when, after Facilities, I'll chime in on that.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Thanks, Bonnie.
All right, we've done the housekeeping and now public comment. Anybody like to make a comment?
Thank you. Good evening, members of the School Committee. My name is Michael Foley. I'm the new town manager here in Gray and just wanted to, I just think I've introduced myself personally to all of you. I'm going to introduce myself to you and the community this evening. Looking forward to working with you and the School Board and looking forward to getting together in the future when we talk about the budget at the Town Council. So I'm available to meet with anyone anytime if anybody would like to reach out and connect with me. I'm doing double duty with my former position in Westbrook for a few more days. But after February 13th, or after the 12th, from the 13th on, I'll be here all the time. So looking forward to working with everyone. If there's anything I can ever do to help, don't hesitate to reach out.
Thanks so much. Okay, and I'd entertain a motion to accept as printed the minutes of the January 3rd regular business meeting.
So moved.
Discussion, anyone see anything? Oh, second, thank you. All in favor? Okay. Do you want this one? Do you have to take this one? Okay, recognition.
Thank you. We have a very large recognition section tonight, which is a very good thing. It means a lot of people are doing a lot of good things in this school. First of all, I'd like to welcome Ms. Mashroll and Ms. Frelick and four of her students who are going to be presenting from their high school program in a few minutes and thank you for coming. Congratulations to the Gray New Gloucester students who were awarded Student of the Quarter for the second quarter of the school year at Portland Arts and Technology High School. Quinn Hill for food service, Jasmine Bell for dance, Sam Fogg for automotive technology one, Emma Gerger for automotive technology two, and Brylee Loughlin for culinary arts. Congratulations to Quinn Lamero who, and Kylie Anne Marty, who auditioned and were admitted to the Maine Music Educators Association Maine All-State Music Festival this May at the University of Maine at Orono. This is very competitive, so congratulations to Quinn and Kylie Anne for their success. The United States Department of Education has nominated high school seniors Kylie Thibodeau and Caitlin Sweeney for the 2024 United States Scholars Program. Nomination is based on scholastic aptitude test scores, academic achievement, leadership, and service to school and community. Again, this is very competitive. They'll be going through this scholarship process during the year. The Maine Teacher of the Year Program recognizes the extraordinary contributions of educators across the state and gives them a platform to share the great things happening in Maine public schools. Three MSAD-15 teachers have been nominated to participate in the application, evaluation, and selection process. Mackenzie Yaton from Memorial School, Calvin Valencourt from the Middle School, and Martha Gill from the Dunn School. And Nathaniel Hebert scored his 1,000th point in a basketball game last night. This is the first time in five years a Gray New Gloucester basketball player has achieved the 1,000-point landmark. So congratulations to all our students and teachers for their great work and turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you. Old business. Craig?
Yeah?
Update on the ESAR grant.
I'm going to do this from here so that people at home can see. So the ESAR grant is the American Rescue Plan Emergency and Secondary Relief Grant, known as ARC. And these supported our schools since the pandemic. It was federal dollars to support schools for the difficulties and barriers and obstacles created by the pandemic. And we received funding for three years. We have completed our third year of grant funding. Some of the things that we spent the grant on over the three years were the air quality and ventilation system that was put in the high school, additional RNs, health office, nutrition services, general education, social workers. We spent money for transportation, on food service, technology leases, technology infrastructure, technology devices, professional development for teachers and support staff for remote learning, summer school conversatory learning for students that fell behind because of the pandemic, and student remote learning supplies. So those were the major things that we spent money on during the three years using that federal grant money. There's $200,000 left. So the $200,000 remains and must be spent by September 30, 2024. And the administration is recommending the money be spent on one-time items or items that will last a long, long time. So we wouldn't want to spend this money on personnel, let's say, because it's gone. And so some of the things that we're thinking about spending on is offsetting some of the technology refresh costs. We're due for new technology devices for some of our students and staff. Those last sometimes four and five-year leases, so that money would cover something that would serve the students and staff for a long time. Paving at Russell and Memorial has been needed for a long time. They have rerouted the pickup and drop-off, which is required. For, in Memorial, for example, would require paving of that whole back section so the parents can drive around. Paving being quite expensive, if that could be deferred towards the grant money instead of local capital improvement, that would be of benefit. Bark mulch at the middle school. And then offset curriculum materials at the middle school and high school and Dunn School in mathematics and literacy. And those materials would last many years and would meet the requirements of the grant. We haven't finalized the recommendation on how we're going to spend it, but we think those are probably four of the best ways to spend it. And to meet, so we're still working on it to make sure that how we want to spend it fits within the guidelines of the grant and the timelines of the grant and the purpose of the grant, which is to support schools that have been negatively impacted by the pandemic. And so that's where our thinking is right now with the remainder of that federal grant.
Any questions, comments?
When, sorry. Missy? Oh, sorry. When those decisions are made, is that something that's going to come to a vote? Will that be decided internally? Like, how will those things be decided?
This is our federal grant, so grant dollars are not usually part of the, the general local budget. But, so what, the reason I'm bringing it to the board and the reason we're going to discuss this in the future at Finance Committee and Budget is, is some of these things we need. For example, we are buying curricular materials for the middle school for mathematics and literacy. If we can pay for that with the federal grant dollars, that means we're not bringing it to the local budget. So the reason I'm sharing this information with you is not that the grant needs a vote. It will indirectly affect the budget that we're developing right now.
Awesome.
A question on the math. What is the math literacy? What is that composed of?
That's being processed through the Curriculum Committee and I think that, is that being presented tonight?
No.
No. So the math curriculum, literacy curriculum, that's processed through the Curriculum Committee and is brought to the board as part of their work.
It's on the, it's on the calendar, so those, those are on the calendar for the Curriculum Committee. If you look at the Curriculum Committee calendar, those dates are aligned for what, for when that will be coming forward.
Anything else?
Did I leave anything out, Shannon? Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Craig. All right, moving on to new business, we'd love to invite the high school Excel program to come share with us.
My presentation's right here.
Yep, just feel free to.
Remember, when they see that teacher presented, now that our class was in a war workshop, they talked about the program that's being inspired. How do I do this? It's part of that.
Maggie's.
Okay. Do I want to add anything else?
Okay, well, thank you for having us. My name is Laura Frelick and I am one of the Excel teachers in our alternative ed program with Dale Burke-Maswell. And we have four students that are going to present today and talk a little bit about what Excel does. So we were asked to just come and talk to you all about some of the projects we're doing and field trips and programming that we do in Excel. And so I gave the students the opportunity to kind of pick what topics they wanted to talk about that were meaningful to them. So they're going to talk about different projects and things that we've been working on within Excel in the past couple of years. And so we're, we're a hands-on program that works with about 25 kids right now in freshmen through seniors. And we are a program that's for kids that just need us to learn a little bit differently than the mainstream classroom. So I'll have them talk a little bit more. First is going to be Levi Grant.
Good evening. My name is Levi Grant. I'm a junior at Gray New Gloucester High School and I joined Excel at the start of this year. The previous years, I was failing my classes and didn't feel like I fit into mainstream classes. Excel is an alternative program here at Gray New Gloucester High School focused on hands-on learning and mental health of their students. A good example of this is almost every morning, we gather in a circle and say how we're feeling on a one through five scale. Excel is also very lucky to be able to go on a community service field trip every single Friday, which lets students help their community in some way, whether that's recycling the bottles at the school or visiting the Good Shepherd Food Bank to pack food for those in need. I chose to talk about these experiences tonight because I know there are other kids who are in the same position I was and feel like they can't succeed in high school. This program can change that as long as you're willing to put in some effort. Thank you.
And next we're going to have Alena Allen, who's going to talk a little bit about our community service.
Hello, my name is Alena Allen. I'm a junior. I have been in the Excel program for about two years. Today I'm going to be talking about our community service. Our community service is something that we do every Friday. We go to many different places, such as Good Shepherd Food Bank in Auburn. We go and we sort produce and that produce gets sent to many different pantries. We also go to the Morrison Center, which is a place for people who have disabilities and we go and hang out with them and do arts and crafts. We go to the Greater Anders Scog, Anders Scoggin Animal Shelter in New Gloucester, Auburn, and we help clean and we have made shelters for them, like stray cats and animals outside. We also go to Memorial School and we read to the second graders and we do activities with them. We have made garden beds for them. It was such a fun activity. I love the experiences that I've had in Excel with our community service. It brings so much happiness to us, not only us, but our community. It means a lot to give back to our community and not just receive. Thank you guys for your time and having us come in tonight.
And next we're going to have Lila Lovett, who's going to talk a little bit about our field trips that we've got on.
Hi, my name's Lila Lovett. This year I'm a junior at Gray New Gloucester High School. I've been in the Excel program for two years. Excel is a hands-on learning community, so we go on a lot of community service trips and a lot of field trips. This year we went on a field trip to the Maine Forest Yurts. We learned how to build and start a fire with fire starter, piece of cotton, and a piece of wood. We learned this skill with one of the winners from the show Survivor. His name was Bob. It's pretty cool. Learning these skills are good if you're lost or abandoned or out somewhere by yourself. We also have gone on other adventurous field trips and community service trips. We've gone to Pine Land Farms and took a tour of the farm and looked at all of their animals. We also visited Olivia's Garden that is also located at Pine Land Farms to learn about the foods and herbs that they grow. During these trips, we have learned how to come together and work as a team. I chose to talk about this experience because Excel is a great community that comes together and does hands-on learning for smoother and less stressful high school experience, especially for students who have hard times in a bigger classroom setting. This field trip was meaningful to me because all of our Excel community came together and got to learn new skills. I personally feel like our class is like a family and we're going, we're learning new experience, experiences together and making good memories. Thank you for coming today and listening to us.
And then lastly, we have Brooke Parsons, who's going to talk a little bit about some of our cooking lessons that we've done.
Hi. Hi, my name is Brooke. I'm a junior and I've been in Excel since this past September. In Excel, we do things a little more hands-on. So during our social studies unit about the world and cooking, Ms. Frelick had all of us pick a country from whatever part of the world we were learning about and make a poster about it. On that poster, we were required to choose a recipe from that country and write down all the instructions and ingredients. After we finished the poster, we all either make the recipe we chose or partner up with another student and do the recipe they chose. We also learn about cooking in other ways, like when Ms. Frelick had a guest speaker from Sudan named John come in and he taught us how to cook okra. As well as making pickles in Ms. M.'s science class, and last but not least, in the spring and summer, a lot of the vegetables we grow in our garden are used in these recipes. Cooking summatives are important for many different reasons. It teaches kids about new countries and their food culture, how to cook in a safe and sanitary way, how to clean up after themselves, how to try new things, and patience, because recipes don't always turn out right the first time. These summatives teach healthy eating habits as well, because most of our recipes do involve vegetables and, you know, fruits, stuff like that. These things are important to be teaching because not every kid at home has somebody to teach them those things. And instead of kids just learning about food from reading, we're learning about it from experience firsthand. Also, learning how to clean up, cook, be safe and sanitary in the kitchen are all very important life skills once we move on from high school and graduate. Overall, I think these types of summatives are enjoyable for everyone and teach a lot of important life skills. Thank you for your time.
So I am just going to add a few more things of different projects that we have been doing the past year or two. So we, we do an upcycling project every year, so the kids go to the Great Transportation Station and get, get supplies and turn them into new things and build things and create dressers or bookshelves or whatever they want. We've done, we had someone come in with a gourd farmer and we painted gourds and made birdhouses, which was a big hit, was super fun. This is the cookbook that, that Brooke was talking about. We put together all of the different recipes and kind of history and culture from countries around the world into a cookbook that, that all the kids were able to take home and try the recipes on their own if they want to. We also, like, we do a lot of work out in the greenhouse. We grew a bunch of herbs and made tea, different kind of tea mixes, herbal tea mixes that we bagged up and gave away as gifts around Christmas. And then I brought in a couple examples of, we have sewing machines and we have, we do an integrated art English class. So they do, they write poems and then we put the poems onto quilts with different images that they pick. And so they're in the process, they're not done. We're currently doing this right now, so they hopefully begin soon. So those are just some of the different projects that we have done, hands-on projects we've done in Excel. And as you, as has been mentioned, the greenhouse is a big part of it as well. So we do a lot of managing up the gardens and the grounds around the greenhouse. We grew mushrooms in there. We're building an aquaponic system right now. And lots of other, we do a seed sale in the spring, so. Yeah, that is the Excel program. Thank you for inviting us here and having us speak. And if you have any questions, I'm sure we'd be happy to answer as well, but thank you for having us.
All right, well, thank you so much, Levi, Lila, is this one working? Alena and Brooke, I know that public speaking is not easy and this is an intimidating setting. So it's, we love it when students come and share what's going on. These people are here to support you, so it makes it a lot easier when we know what kids are actually doing at school. Does anyone have any questions for this group? Missy?
So does, for those that don't, aren't aware of the Excel program, when does that take place? During the week? Is it to take place of a certain class every day? Is it?
Yep, they're with us all day for all, yeah, they're with, they're with us for most of the day. Some of the kids are, take classes outside, like language classes. So I teach English and Social Studies and then I teach Integrated Art English in the greenhouse class. Ms. M. teaches math, science, co-op, and wellness, so PE and health. So they can get all their credits within our program. The only thing they can't get is world language. But sometimes they also like want to take electives or they do paths, but for the majority of their time, but they're with us.
Awesome. How many students are in the program?
Right now we have 25. Usually we cap it at 24, but, I mean, exceptions, but yeah, usually between 20 and 24s. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
I don't have a question. I just want to make a comment. Kudos to you all for standing up here, just like she said earlier. Great presentation, great eye contact. That was, that's very, it's a hard skill and you guys nailed it, so great. Also, I'll speak on some of the board here. I don't know if all of them were here, but over the last year and a half, we've talked a lot about the life skills portion of your high school experience. And it seems like you guys are definitely knocking that out of the park, so great job. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well done. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I'll give you guys a tip. We'd love to have you. You're welcome to stay, but it is totally normal for you to sneak out. So thank you so much. Okay, talk back to follow. We have a series of appointments to consider. I would welcome a motion to appoint Danny Blake to a three-year non-provationalary contract as principal at Russell School. So moved.
Second.
And discussion, we want to welcome some thoughts from Dr. King on each of these candidates.
Okay, so I spent my, I spent a lot of time thinking about each of these people. I've been here for eight years and. Um, I've been here for eight years and I spend a lot of time in their schools. I work with them at the administrative team. And I thought it might be a nice time to just tell the board why, a little bit more about them and their daily work and why I'm more than happy to place them ahead for a, a three-year contract. I think Mr. Blake is here.
He's here. He's in the back.
So, uh, the re, uh, one of the, some of the strongest attributes of Mr. Blake are he cultivates a climate of high expectations for success. The focus at Russell School is clearly on teaching and learning. He organizes frequent and ongoing monitoring of his student progress regarding reading, writing, and mathematics. Uh, whenever I drop by and ask him pop questions, he can elucidate with ease when I ask about student performance or making decisions about teachers and instructional practice. Uh, he's very analytical and can offer good suggestions when there is a problem to solve, whether the problem is big or small. Uh, he's not afraid. He can counterpoint. He's good at helping me or helping the administrative team look at a question or a problem from different angles. And he and his faculty are all rowing together in the same direction. He and his faculty take full responsibility for every student at Russell School. Uh, it's clear that every student at Russell School matters to Mr. Blake and those teachers. So that's why, um, we're recommending him for another three-year contract.
Great. Any other discussion?
Let's get him signed up.
All right. We're lucky to have you. All in favor?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, next up, um, I would entertain a motion to appoint Amanda Hennessy to a three-year non-provocationary contract as principal of Memorial School.
So moved.
Second.
And come on down. The Price is Right.
So, Mrs. Hennessy maintains solid and positive homeschool relationships. She builds trust with her students and parents and develops systems for parents to have meaningful participation at the many school events at Memorial School. She is very structured and protecting and maximizing instructional time. There's a commitment in each classroom to build skills in the core subject areas. They use assessment data to ensure students are learning. And if students aren't learning or if they're struggling, that she leads discussions with the faculty on the best strategies to help those students. Ms. Hennessy and her staff ensure Memorial has a very safe and orderly environment. Uh, she's single-handedly got that fencing put up to protect her kids. She's single-handedly got that stop sign with the flashing speedlights. Uh, so safety is a huge concern and she, she arm wrestles till she gets it. And, uh, she is highly focused on recruiting and hiring the best people to work in our schools and uses the, uh, official evaluation system to ensure high-quality teaching and learning at the school. So that's why I'm recommending Ms. Hennessy for another thirty-year contract.
Excellent. We are lucky to have you as well. Um, further discussion? All in favor? Thank you so much.
Can't wait for another three years at Memorial School.
Perfect.
Thank you, Amanda.
All right, let's see if we can't go three for three, um, and have a motion.
Quick, Jeff.
Oh, no, wait, sorry, four. We're only halfway there. Looking for a motion to appoint Jeff Robbins to a three-year non-provocationary contract as principal at Dunn School.
So moved.
Second.
So, uh, Mr. Robbins is highly analytical, can identify the essence of an issue or a problem, and develops solutions that make sense. He quickly adapts when change is necessary and is skillful at helping his staff adapt to change as well. He is at lunch duty, he's at recess duty, he's at bus duty, he's always interacting with students and staff. He engages in what is commonly known, uh, as management by walking around. Uh, and, uh, he does so so that he sees his systems and his people and ensure that everything is working the way it's supposed to be. Uh, he oversees a highly effective response to intervention instructional system where all teachers sit down and are engaged with student data and student work samples, and they talk about instruction. They talk about teaching and learning. That's how they use their Wednesday time, and they talk about how to use that data and work samples to, uh, maybe change instruction for kids that are having a hard time learning. Uh, Mr. Robbins has a clear umbrella view of the entire school district and has been instrumental at the school administrative and school board level in creating and managing systems that work. And so, I'm very happy to recommend Mr. Robbins for another three-year contract.
All right. Our luck continues. All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and a motion to appoint Kristen Deco to a three-year non-provocationary contract as assistant principal at the middle school.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Kristen Deco has been instrumental in developing and implementing a behavior, a behavioral response to intervention program that has significantly reduced student disciplinary referrals. Her deliberate approach helps students take responsibility for their behavior and develop better interpersonal skills within the school setting. Um, whenever I speak to her about that behavioral program, she's able to show me charts, graphs, pie charts. And, um, there's been a fifty percent reduction, is that correct, in the number of office referrals?
Um, in classroom exclusion.
In classroom exclusion.
About thirty-eight percent.
Thirty-eight percent, which is really huge, and this was done in a, uh, a school started in September, so four or five-month period, uh, which is pretty impressive. Uh, she knows her students, she knows her parents, and she knows the staff. Whenever I speak with Ms. Deco, she converses knowledgeably about students, families, curriculum, or anything else that I spring on her with little notice. Uh, her primary achievement has been to help create a safe and orderly school, allowing teaching and learning to take place with minimum disruption. She effectively coaxes students and teachers in a positive, respectful frame of mind. And she works hard to develop trust with students and families who may have problems uh, in their personal lives or problems at school, and she communicates a sense of caring and concern and provides pathways and support, uh, for students and parents, um, to have a better way. So, I'm happy to recommend Ms. Deco for another three-year contract.
Excellent. Any more questions? All in favor? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think this is a pretty good illustration of the incredible administrative staff we have, and, um, I will argue that we have the best principals around, um, up against any school district I know about. So, I'm grateful to have you continue to wanna be with us as well. Um, and moving on, um, okay, this is information, this is informational, right? We don't have a vote.
Uh, right, there, that's, uh, yeah, it is a vote. The board has to, yeah.
So, looking for a motion, uh, to consider acceptance of an updated performance evaluation professional growth plan.
So moved.
Second.
And it's up to invite Dr. Turner to tell us about it.
So, um, I'm not gonna talk a lot, 'cause I know I provided a lot of documentation, um, but I'm just gonna give you a quick overview, um, particularly some, we haven't done this since a lot of folks have been on the board. So, um, the evaluation system and the growth system that we have for educators, um, is something that is, um, dictated by statute, the sorts of things that have to be in it, um, and can be in it. And we have some flexibility within that, but there are, you know, fairly straightforward rules. Part of that is the process by which our plans have to be adopted. So, the committee that we have in the school district must consist of teachers and administrators. And anytime we are taking a voting action item, such as changing the plan, we then have to also reach out to our teachers' association and they get to send additional delegates. There have to be more teachers than administrators voting, those kinds of rules, so. Um, and then we, additionally, we have our committee, which are a group of teacher leaders, all the administrators, myself, and we meet once a month, every other month, to just come together as a district. How is it going? What do people need help with? How can we get better? So, we've spent the last year, year and a half, beginning to really evaluate our program, um, identifying areas in which we felt it was really strong, areas in which it needed some work. Started looking around, what are other schools doing? What can we learn from other people? And, and based on that pretty long process, um, we are proposing some changes to our plan. Um, so now that those have been voted on and approved by the, um, local P E P G committee, is what it's called, um, it now comes to you all. Uh, the teacher evaluation plan is something that has to be voted on by school boards. Once a plan is approved by the school board, it then goes to the Department of Education. They further review it and approve it or send it back to us for changes. So, those would be the next steps. Um, the plan that we are proposing, um, does a couple of things. The first thing we're trying to do is simplify the document. Um, traditionally, the document has included all the historical process in our plans. The problem we're finding with that is when one of our teachers goes, "Wait a second, I'm in year two of my cycle. I don't remember if I have evaluate, you know, what my next step is." They're trying to flip through fifty-two pages of documents to find the information that's pertinent to the actual growth and evaluation process. So, we're trying to simplify, we're trying to update. The, um, Danielson rubric is one that we have used, um, since two thousand and seven. Um, and so, it's been, it's been updated actually twice since then, um, with the most recent rubrics being the two thousand and twenty-three. Um, we read through them. They are fundamentally the same as what we've been using. Um, it's just there's a little change in the vernacular and it sort of, um, recognizes the shift in the context. It recognizes that COVID happened, you know, and that teachers are expected to do a lot more electronically, a lot more, um, you know, potential remote teaching, those sorts of things. So, um, we really felt that the rubrics appropriately reflected how education has changed over that period of time and gives us, um, better areas to help our teachers grow and, and get better at what they do. Um, in addition to that, it's just streamlining some of the activities, um, that how they used to do it. Um, it used to be sort of, there was a set of activities here and a set of activities here, and it was under two different categories, but was all sort of the same activities, and they were all supposed to contribute to the same goal. So we're trying to kind of streamline that so that people aren't recording things in different, it, it came down to, they were recording things in two and three places when the activities were the same, the activity, you know, and the data is the same, but why are we writing it down in three different places? So we're trying to sort of become more efficient in how our teachers are, are documenting their evaluation process, and we are documenting those evaluation processes. So we're spending more time on actual growth than we are on filling out the form, so. Um, we did a little, so mostly those are tweaking, as I said, in what I shared with you is the detailed version, um, and a detailed memo of what we changed. You can also see that red line version, so you can see side-by-side what we changed. And then I also tried to give you just a clean one, because that red line version gets a little eye-crossing, 'cause there's just so much in it, so. Um, so yeah, we're asking for you to, um, vote to approve our updated plan. And if you do, we will then forward it to the Department of Education and we'll let you know what they said.
All right, thank you. Um, questions, uh, or comments about the plan as appeared in your materials? Derek?
Really just a comment. I just wanted to thank you for providing all of the versions, 'cause, um, not having been part of the process, but see, if we all we saw was the red line version, um, without a whole lot of context and explanation, it'd be like, really? All this changed and why? So I appreciate you coming tonight and explaining, giving us a little thumbnail of why, the whys. But I did like having both versions, so I could compare them side-by-side, get a sense of what you were changing. I don't have any comments about it, just that I, I appreciate the documentation, so I can really see.
Absolutely, you're welcome.
Anyone else?
Um, I, I'm not sure if it's in here. I haven't been able to find it anyway. Um, this is for how they perform as, in their job and their role as teachers, basically guidelines to help them. Is, is there anything about, um, the results of kids' performance based on the teaching? Is that in here as well?
So, um, I, yes. Um, in that most of the rubrics are focusing on how, how kids are teaching and learning, and we're expecting our teachers to be reflecting on that as part of the goal process. Um, something that was a part of the Maine State law once upon a time was that there had to be a numeric formula, and that numeric formula then numerically changed a teacher's summative rating. Um, that was taken out of law and therefore taken out of our plan for a number of years. So we've gotten rid of the numeric formula that used to be required, but it is, um, when you look at those Danielson rubrics, when it's explaining what, what high-quality teaching and what an excellent teacher looks like, those types of elements are included. So the teachers are then, um, rated on a four-point scale based on those specific individual items.
And that's specifically for test result, performance?
So, test result performance is one of many evaluations we ask them to look at as part of, when, when they're getting rated on that piece, yeah. How they're using their students' data to inform their instruction. And frankly, engage in their professional practice for what they need to improve is part of, uh, some of the elements that teachers are rated on.
Okay. Any, anyone else? All right, um, then all in favor of, um, moving this forward to the next step? Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, um, is a informational item um, from, uh, Dr. King on, um, enrollment projections, um, for the district.
Yep. So, we, uh, are members of the New England School Development Council, which is a, uh, professional organization that serves all New England states. Um, it's similar to the Maine School Management Association that has the Maine School Boards Association, except this is broader. It's more of a New England, uh, approach. Uh, most of their work is done with, um, deals with, uh, hiring, uh, doing searches for superintendents. They do a lot of work on consulting, uh, for school boards. Uh, and one of the other services that they offer is to do demographic and projection studies for enrollment. And so, as part of our membership, we're allowed to get this as part of our service. So, we had not been members of this organization for a while, um, because most of the services that we do need, we get through Maine School Management Association or one-time, uh, vendor relationships. Um, but we decided to go with DESDEC, because we're looking at, um, our student enrollments. We're looking at bond projects, we're looking at ventilation projects, and we thought it's a good time uh, to get an update on our, our enrollment. I did send you the eighty-six-page copy, um, that they sent to us, which is full, full detail, has our historical enrollment and has projections. I think, uh, page three gives us the most important, uh, information. Um, it looks at our historical, uh, enrollment from, uh, two thousand and fourteen to today. And what it highlights is, um, the decline that we've had, uh, not huge, but, uh, slight throughout, and, uh, it gets us to today where our official enrollment on October first was one thousand eight hundred and forty-one. The projected enrollment, if you look at, um, the page four enrollment, uh, it attempts to project, um, what our enrollment will be across grades and across the school district. And between, um, if you look at page five, uh, the projection from two thousand and thirty-three to two thousand and thirty-four is to hover around, uh, the eighteen-hundred mark. Now, uh, and that is graphed on the following pages. So what it says is, is the population is going to be, uh, stable for the next decade. However, there is a, um, However, there is a reliance factor on how, how valid they evaluate their own projection. And their evaluation says, the first three years is the most likely to be the most valid and the further out you go, it's less reliable. So, and, and I think that makes sense because seven years from now, you could have a contractor build a hundred houses and there's really no way of knowing that. But based on the data that they have, they are saying that they do not see a major fluctuation one way or the other over the next decade. And so, that's what they, they've had to say.
All right, thanks. Any questions? All right. Now, some policy actions, bear with me a little bit as I flip in and out. Policy hat on. I'm looking for a motion to consider policy I H B A C, child defined.
So, move.
Second. Okay, this is a removal, a replacement. So, you will have received a fully red line copy, that's the one we're recommending we remove, and the new version we're recommending be adopted. So, this is policy that's required by law. It is pretty directed by the legislature as to what we need to do. The big change here, I believe, was the increase to the age of twenty-two for certain kids in the district who are in need of or eligible for for special education and supportive assistance. There is additional red line where we needed to update language around McKinney-Bento eligible students. Any questions?
I'd like an explanation.
On which?
Right in the first paragraph, I guess it's, the title of it's child find, but it looks like the district is reaching out in areas where parents have made decisions to send their schools, they, they've chosen to private school or homeschool or whatever, and those parents have at that point, you know, made that decision. So, if there was special needs, they would of course include that in their plan with their child. So, why would we, I would need an explanation of why the school district needs to reach out and even going into county jails and, and where else is it? Yeah. So, I, I, I have a hard time fathering that, that, you know, the school district would be interfering with a parent's decision. And I know that the parents, homeschooling and all, have to account to the state for the program they're using. But does that mean that if those parents haven't sent their kids to a special needs school privately, that the state still needs to have them enrolled in our system as well? See, I'm trying to get a handle on what all that means.
Yeah, well, Craig will explain this one.
So, the, the superintendent of schools is required by law to ensure that every student living within the district is receiving an education. That can be public school, that can be a religious school, that can be a private school, it can be a charter school, it can be a homeschool. And so, we have to make sure and verify that every school-aged child is in school. Even though, and so what the child find does is part of that. And then if there is a student with a mitigating disability, that we know that services are offered for that child and that the parent is aware that those services are, are there. And it's in no way designed or intended or used to change parents' minds about where their kids go to school.
So, the word you just used before, that's not really in it to make that paragraph clearer. That's what you, you know, that would be good if that was included. It's not designed to, it's only designed to make that information available. Not to educate, but to make them avail, uh, not to have the student educated, but to let the parent be educated in knowing that the service is available if they need it. Is that what you're saying?
Is that not clear in there? That's not, you're saying that's not clear?
I'm not sure that that, this paragraph, it's like, it led me to ask the question.
Yeah. So, I'm, I'm not sure on the clarity. This is the recommended policy for us to accomplish the child find, to accomplish us ensuring that every kid is accounted for and getting some form of education. I, I don't have a recommendation to change the language.
And if I remember correctly from the meeting, this was kind of one of the ones where it was sort of told, this is the policy that you need to, to use. Like, it's not necessarily one that we can make a lot of changes to due to the amount of like legal requirements that are involved in this.
So, what this policy says is that it's our duty to identify and locate children who are eligible for academic services. In no way is a parent obligated to take advantage of that opportunity. It's our job to find them. And that's all this policy is saying.
But shouldn't it say that? There's no obligation to, to have the parent inclu, be included in?
No, because that's not our, our legal obligation is to identify the children, that's all the child find is. It's not about even what, just that we know where they are. So that we, so, so that the state can't come to us and say, you're not offering education to these children and we can't pretend to say, oh, we didn't know about them. You know, that we say, we know where they are, everyone's accounted for, and that's all child find needs.
This isn't part of the intent of this to make it proactive, where the school department has the responsibility to go find the kids.
Yes.
It's not, because many of these parents are not necessarily going to inform us on their own. But it's still our obligation, so we have to know about them, so we have to go find them. We have to be able to account for them. And this makes it proactive rather than, than just waiting for information to come to us.
So, this policy only speaks to our responsibility, but not a parent's position on whether or not they take it?
But it does say you have to evaluate that student. So, the superintendent evaluates, the special needs teacher evaluates, who evaluates? I mean, as a board, are we not supposed to make any changes at all to policies? Or if we think that some, you know, I mean, something's not clear enough? We're not supposed to make any recommendations for change?
We can. This came through the policy committee who did that work and made this recommendation in conjunction with the admin and the lawyers. So, that's not generally work we, we would do at this unless we can't, unless we can't come to a vote to move it forward, and then it could be kicked back to the committee.
Was this directly from Drummond-Woodson?
Yes.
It's from the National School Board Association.
Yep. So.
It's based on federal law.
And they're always right, yeah.
Well, yeah.
It does not behoove us to be out of, out of step with federal law.
I'm not looking to change for change, I'm looking for clarification, I guess, in wording.
Okay.
That, that's what I'm looking at. If, so, I suppose I should make a motion that this goes back to the committee for reconsideration and I'll submit some clarification notes or something or whatever. I don't know how that works.
Well, we have a motion on the table that we're discussion on. So, how does that work? Do we have to see that?
It's a motion you have to second it.
I'll second it, I'll second it. We can just vote it, you can vote on it.
Okay, so let's finish with this one. If we don't have the votes to move the policy forward, then we'll entertain a motion to kick it back to committee.
Okay. All right. Did anybody else have any questions about it?
Any other? Yes.
I'd like to understand what does the actual evaluation mean?
Like, I.
May I speak?
Yes, please.
I would love to invite our special education director. Often at these meetings and we appreciate your attendance.
Yes, thank you. So, we do have an obligation under federal law to look for students that may be students with educational disabilities. And we make known that parents can reach out to us. We will have meetings, we'll look at the student. If we determine that they look like they might have an educational disability, we would use our special ed evaluators in the public school to do evaluations. And then we would have a team meeting and determine whether or not they do meet the requirements of having an educational disability. Typically, what we do then is we kind of talk about if your child was enrolled in public school, these are the services we would offer. Because we want them to be aware of that. Because when a parent chooses to send their child to homeschool or to private school, they're not obligated to provide special education services. So, our duty goes as far as evaluating, determining whether or not they have an educational disability, and then we've done what we need to do.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Yes.
So, to follow that, what happens if you find that they need, they need services?
So, then again, I would talk about what we would do if they were enrolled in public schools and the parent would be aware what our obligation would be. But it's a parent's choice what they decide to do from there.
So, the student would become a part of the student population? Or they still would be in private school?
That's up to the parents. I'm just saying that if they were to enroll in public school, we would tell them what we would offer.
They don't have to take it.
But that, that's what my question was. So, they have to come into the public school for?
No.
If they want to receive special education services, yes. Because private schools are not obligated to provide special education services the way a public school department is.
We can offer, but they don't have to take it.
Right.
Does that answer your question?
Thank you. Okay, so, on the current motion on the table to approve this policy as written, all in favor? All right, so we will move forward with that.
All opposed.
All opposed, sorry.
I did not vote for it. You didn't ask for no vote?
I just said all opposed.
Oh, I didn't hear you say that. I oppose.
Okay.
I wanted more clarification.
Understood. Okay, next. Here, motion to consider policy G B O, family child leave.
So, move.
Second.
Okay, one second, let me pull that one up. So, this is a policy that has been existing on the books since two thousand and six that states are, generally speaking, are compliant with the Family Care Act and family sick leave. So, under Maine Family Care Act, the terms are recognized here. We had some updates with changing language around what qualifies as a family member. Now understood to be a spouse, domestic partner, child, parent, parent-in-law, sibling, grandparent, or grandchild. Again, this is just stating our consistent application of policy with fam law. Questions? Concerns? Okay, all in favor? And now, if I could get a motion to consider policy G B N, family medical leave?
So, move.
Second.
Okay, and this one, I don't show.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
Is it in the packet? Is it called G B N?
Red line G B N.
Oh, red line, there it is, okay, thank you. So, this is a similar one, more policy around the Family Medical Leave Act. Again, updating the language around eligibility, the nature of relationship, qualifying grandparent, grandchild, grandchild of domestic partner, and some just updating on grammar. Any questions or comments on that? All in favor? Okay. And motion, please, to consider policy J I H, questioning and searches of students. Second. Okay, so this is the policy piece. This had been in review last year, did not have any changes. And we're moving it forward to just be updated, but keep it together with the procedure piece, which is next. Questions?
Just a moment, I think this is the one. J I H, yeah, that's the one, line thirty-six. Oh, no, that's not one. I'll wait just a second. I, I did the work off the computer, this, this, and I had line thirty-six, I referenced like line thirty-six.
Is it on the procedure one maybe?
True, had to do, it had to do with notification, parents, does not necessarily have to be informed if they were, or just, no, I'm sorry, go ahead. I apologize. I've got it on the policy.
Okay, great. All right, all in favor? All right, so we'll go on that one. And then the related piece, if I could get a motion to approve policy J I H, questioning and searches of student procedure, J I H R.
So, move.
Second. Okay, now this is the accompanying procedure piece. There was some recommendations to remove per Drummond-Woodson on things that law enforcement would or would not do. And I think that's about it. Was this the one you had a?
Yeah, it's, I guess the lines changed, but I see that it's line twenty-eight. And, and there are the no obligation to notify a student's parent prior to questioning because student regarding alleged violations. Shouldn't they be called in immediately if they're in violation?
It, it says prior to questioning a student. So, there are no, under no obligation to notify a, a parent before questioning a student. Not, it's not saying that if a student has a violation.
I think you're questioning because there's a violation, it's an alleged violation. And I, I, I don't know. I read all of this and it's all meshed together. And it seems like duplication of effort in all these policies regarding this search of the students. You know, because you have a list of policies that relate to this. And, you know, looking for, you know, illicit drugs and things like that, that I, I would think that if you, I, I don't know. I just would think that a parent should be brought in when you're, you're talking with a student who's in violation. I'm not talking about just, you know, a little mishap, I'm talking about serious stuff. And I don't find that in reading all these documents that, that's there. Parents should be notified immediately if their kids are having, you know, coming to school with things and that's what's coming to school with, whatever the case may be, whatever the product is. And there's also no, it says disciplinary action to all of this. And I'm not quite sure it's outlined what the disciplinary action would be. I have not found where to identify the disciplinary action that will be taken. There must be like a definition of something, somewhere that it would refer to that section when they use disciplinary action throughout the documents.
Well, I think it's a disciplinary action is not policy, that would be rules and procedures at each school. So, I'm assuming that varies. You know, disciplinary action for a kindergartner would look very different than a, you know, who just hit someone on the playground would probably. who just hit someone on the playground would probably look different than a disciplinary action for, you know, a high schooler who was found to have drugs in their locker.
Except that it looks like the documents are just zoning in on those people who are carrying guns or bringing drugs and that type of thing to schools. You know, that's what it appears to be in the documents. I don't think we were, I never got an impression reading all of this that has to do anything with the lower grades. I got the impression it's more like the upper grades that, you know, they were... But that's just my impression or my take as I read through this. I know you've all been through this, and you know, you all have, you know, you know, worked with these documents, but I'm coming in clean. And this is my impression is reading the material, not just what's in front of me, but also doing the research of the other documents. And so, my summary comes out to what I just said. That's how I feel.
Craig, can you speak to the?
Well, I would just say, you know, policies come from a variety of places. Some are organic, they come from the school district themselves. Some are recommendations from education associations or teacher associations. Some come from recommendations from state or federal government. Some come from the courts. And I think where this policy is coming from rests with due process for students. And that is something that has been in the courts quite frequently. Questioning students, searching students, searching lockers, searching cars in the parking lot. And these come up a lot. And so, I think what this policy is doing, and it's been developed at the national level, state level, is informed a lot by what the courts have decided for student due process. And so, whether or not a parent should be notified, I think most times, if there's a trouble at school, that parents are notified and called in. But I think this is more to ensure that the letter of the law is followed. Because there certainly have been times in the past when students' due process rights may not have been taken into consideration. And I think that's what this policy does to inform school board members and school employees how to ensure that the students' due process rights are protected.
I'm also thinking on that same line that you're pointing out, Fran. I think I appreciate you sharing how it reads. Because I think I was looking at it differently as in school administrators are under no obligation to notify a student's parents to question a student. I was reading that in an emergency, we can't get ahold of a parent and something like really dangerous is happening. Look, we can move ahead in talking to the student. So, someone can't come in and say, oh, well, you didn't call mom, so you can't do anything here. Not that they would in any way be trying to hide things from parents.
If you had to explain that to me, and the document should say that.
It does say that.
I feel like that's what it does say.
It does say that.
It may, but I mean...
We don't have to, we don't need to call a parent just to question a child, to ask questions. So, nothing has happened, it's alleged. So, if we do find something, we have a right to write then, just ask, is it yours? You know, ask the questions, and then if we need to move forward, then we would contact parents. This is just alleged.
Okay.
We just have a right to ask the questions.
Okay, I'll buy the ledge. I'm going beyond the alleged then.
And I'll just add a piece to that, because I know I can get a little convoluted, because I'm sure you're probably looking at law enforcement in here as well. But when it comes to the administration at the building, they have a whole different booklet that they can play by versus what law enforcement can. So, if a student in a school is in violation of a law, when they talk to law enforcement, they have their own rules that they have to go by when they're dealing with juvenile. So, I know sometimes it seems like it can mesh together, but there's two different playbooks that are going on here. And this is strictly policy for school-related stuff, so.
Because we did talk about that in the policy meeting together. That was your question.
Oh, you did, yeah. Do you use that a lot, this policy? I hope not.
Well...
I don't know if that's the proper question for you or not, but, you know.
It is.
Okay.
So, I was speaking earlier about mistaken and student behavior and working with student behavior. I think administrators use this daily, you know. When, you know, you're speaking to a student about something that happens at school, there are things we can do and things we can't do. And that's what this policy helps us do. And it creates a framework for the administrators and the teachers, and it protects the students from excess.
It's good to see it's in the handbook. So, you know, that's a good thing, yeah.
For sure.
Yeah. So, Cole was just reminding me that this, we just looked at this last year. It got tabled. So, we never actually, in order to keep the policy and the procedure together, we did, the group did the work and then it got tabled to run the procedure by Drummond-Woodson. Which we did. So, there was a request last year to have the lawyers look at the policy because of the seriousness of...
Last year, we had questions.
Yeah, so, and then, and that's where they gave their, weighed in and gave their recommendations.
Okay.
Okay, so all in favor? All right. Last one, can I get a motion to consider, to approve policy JKD suspension of students?
So moved, second.
All right, for discussion, this was revised in 2011. It's up, due for review. There was not any substantial changes to this whatsoever. In fact, this probably would have been caught up in our new, our new practice of just reviewing without making changes and adopting, saying that we reviewed it, because we don't actually have any changes. But are there any questions on suspension of students? All right, all in favor? Okay. Thank you for slogging through that important policy work. And on to committee reports, facilities.
Yes. We met earlier this evening at 5:30, and we had an agenda which covered the full hour. We are a busy meeting. The first was old business regarding the state mandated air requirements that you had asked about earlier, Fran. We did move forward as we talked in our last meeting about applying for those state grants, just to see what we would qualify for. We did get letters back from the state, and we're meeting with mechanical services on Friday to clarify some of the questions we have on those letters. But we did get state funding for 6.5 million to go towards our HVC air quality state requirements. But there's a lot of questions on how we use those, the deadlines, there's so much things. So, we are meeting with mechanical services at 11:00 AM on Friday, Maggie, via Zoom to clarify those letters. And then, we're going to give a full report at next month's meeting with more detail for the board to consider. And then, other things on there was update on bond committee work, which I don't want to go into because Penny is going to address that in her section. We do, though, I would like to, in my report, I'm not sure if it's the time to do it or not, but the... We do have, last year, we approved some architectural funds. And we have, we're still under architectural contract for... And we have some funds left to use. So, I know in conjunction with this, with facilities and the bond, I wanted to put a motion on the table to open that, to keep that contract open and use the rest of those funds for tasks needed for both facilities and bond. Would I do that here? Or would I do that later?
So, you're making a motion that we can continue use of the existing contract with architects that was approved last year?
Correct, because we have some architectural work that needs to be done revolving both committees. So, we have money remaining. So, can I state the motion?
No.
Or can I do under that?
No. This is a report, you can't make a motion in a report. You have to have it on the agenda.
Well, that was the thing we added to the agenda as we began.
Yeah, could be added to the agenda.
So, let's, so let's do that after your report.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you, Fran. So, on the, we had a field and use report done by the administration, which goes along with the bond committee, so that can, on our hours of field use, so that was information for them, for their meeting last night. We wanted an update on the high school portable, but that requires a site plan. But because we also need a site plan done for the bond, possible, possible bond, instead of spending money on a site plan now, we're going to hold off on and do one site plan for both projects. Because it just makes sense that we don't waste funds on that. So, that's still on hold. And then, the amphitheater update. The, just as a reminder, we got a $125,000 gift from Skillens to put in amphitheater. And they came out to the property to...
$125,000?
Not Skillens.
What was it?
Planson.
Planson.
Planson, thank you for clarification. Skillens came out to analyze the project. And because it's, there's going to be, financially, it will be a lot to do everything we want. So, what makes more sense is to build the staging and the surround for the amphitheater. And then, for now, allow attendees to bring chairs and blankets and stuff for seating as opposed to putting in granite steps, which will be absorbed more than what we have. So, that was the update on that. And I think we have five years to work on that. So, it was just an update on what we can do and what it costs to do those things, and looking at what we should be doing. And that's as far as we got.
Questions for facilities?
Amphitheater in the gloss, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, behind Dunn.
Yeah.
Yeah, behind Dunn. In that little bowl, that's right behind the playground. Yeah.
So, let's then, because we are, we have, I know we talked about putting the bond piece here, but because the motion to add to the agenda had potential action, let's sit on it, do all our committee reports, and finish with that one.
That makes sense.
Okay. Finance?
Finance hasn't met since the last report, and the minutes from that report are in the packet.
Fantastic, thank you.
Great report, Gary.
We're meeting next week.
Great. Personnel committee, we are, Jason is, oh, are you covering?
Again.
Great.
We started at 4:30, went into executive session for for staff contract negotiations and ran out of time two hours later before finance. So, we're meeting next week to go over how we're going to restructure the director of finances position and office. And we're comparing our organizational structures to some comparative districts around.
Great.
Yeah.
All right, thanks. Picking up speed here. Curriculum.
Okay, well, the curriculum committee met January 17th in this building. I unfortunately had slipped on the ice and was not able to chair the meeting. And unfortunately, Sam acted in my stead, and he's not here today. So, I just looked at the minutes and just sort of winged it. Ms. Moore, Monroe, and Collins were here, so they can chime in if I miss anything. But just looking at the minutes, they discussed the four, Shonda discussed the four major content areas that are on the calendar for the end of the school year, which are world languages, health and phys ed, visual and performing arts, and mathematics. And then, for new business, we discussed the life and career development, and she introduced the new IB coordinator. Anything else that I should add?
Sum it up.
Okay, thank you. That's it for curriculum?
All right, thank you. And then, great news, we just covered all of the policy committee's work in excruciating detail. So, there's no additional news for policy. So, then, to add the new business of an update from the bond committee, we had our final planned meeting last night. I think did a, had a great meeting pulling together a lot of the pieces we had heard, starting to sketch out the bones of a report and recommendations for what we would like to encourage the school board to do next. As anticipated by all the work that had previously been done, there is a great deal of support and illustrated need around performing arts, cafeteria, and athletic spaces. We will have a full report on that for our next meeting, along with probably a little presentation. And the report will be made available ahead of time. In the meantime, one of the recommendations of that group is to get some additional drawings and work further with the architect that we have already contracted with last year. Because the draft plans that we had when this was last revisited are not fully realizing the need as it was presented to us. So, there is an existing contract with an architect. We did all the RFP and all that process last year. There were funds approved for it last year, which we did not fully utilize. So, if we had a motion to allow that work to continue, it would be possible for the district to reengage with those architects as the committee puts their report together for next month. Ms. DeWes, that's a motion that...
That, excuse me. That is going to take place, you're supposed to report in the next school board meeting of the result of...
Correct.
Right, and then, right after that, if the board approves the presentation, then we go to the architect.
Correct. But the, our recommendation, it is part of our agreed-upon recommendation that the district reengage with the architects to get...
Oh, the one we already had.
Yeah, the one we already, so what we had talked about last night, that this already was happening. We had stopped working with them to get our committee going again. And so, rather than lose a month until our next meeting to reach out and contact them again and start that process, that with this group's approval, we, the district would feel comfortable, you know, reaching back out. So, we wanted to just make sure that we...
We didn't want to lose a month.
Yeah. But we don't want to do, you know, we want to make sure that the board is in support of that.
So, should I make a motion and then we have discussion?
I disagree with that outcome, I'm sorry. I was very clear on the outcome that we would be doing a report at the next meeting, the board meeting.
Yes.
With all the information that we've gathered.
Yes.
And for the board to see if they want to accept that information and go forward. And the next step would be, the next step would be getting the architect. Engage the architect the following day. So, at this point, I was surprised you brought it up tonight, because again, it was, it's, that's according to the group.
Right, so it's not our, I'm not giving our, I'm not giving our finished report. Part of our, part of the group outline is that if, there's a report given at every board meeting. Last night, we discussed putting together a report and presentation for next month in which we would recommend to get the goals met of that committee, that there would have to be updated, additional drawings done, because the ones we have are not adequate to move forward with.
So, you need the plans for your report?
No, we don't need them for our report. But because we had kicked out our meetings, we were supposed to have that tonight, we don't. We're going to have to kick it out another month. We're not suggesting anything's done next month or we come forward with any plans whatsoever, but to allow the district to basically reconnect with the architects that we already have a contract with.
If your ask was to take action, it has to be on the agenda.
We amended the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, we all voted on it.
I'm sorry? I didn't hear you.
So, at the beginning of the meeting, Misty made a motion to amend the agenda...
To amend the agenda, to add.
To hear an update with possible action. We all voted yes. Now, we don't have to vote.
That's my point.
I'm a little unclear, why, why do we need to vote to have them reengage with the, uh, the architect?
We don't.
If we've got a contract with them, uh, is it, did, did the contract expire?
No, our contract is, our contract is still valid. There was debate on that. Does, are we going outside the scope? Does the board, you know, um, there's some folks who thought, no, we have a contract. We, the board approved it last year. Contract exists, there's money left on the contract. But because the budget year has changed, um, Diane said, you know, you should, let's have full transparency with the board and make sure, uh, you know, it felt, it felt gray, because we do have a contract, it's valid, there's money left on it. But we?
It's like binding the future board thing, kinda thing?
Right, like, like last year's board started that contract.
Okay.
You know, so do we, do we, do we tie their hands on doing, making any progress for four more weeks? Um, or do we say, we have an existing contract that was already greenlit, keep working on it?
Well, and wasn't there some conversation last night too, that once we contact them, that there could be money, additional funds, maybe? If they start drafting and stuff?
The next day they were supposed to start, once the board has the meeting gone, um, the next board meeting, the following day, the kind, the architects are gonna go and to engage and to?
Well, they would be, they would be called.
Perform whatever we need to have them perform.
They would be called, doesn't mean they're available that day.
So essentially, are, is, are we just looking for agreement to contact the architect and get a meeting on the books with them so that?
The question is, are we, are we allowed to continue using a contract that was approved last year? Or do we need to, or do we need to wait and revisit that as a new item?
I'm not sure the board would have that, be able to make that kind of decision. But I don't have any background on that.
Are, are we asking the architects to go beyond the scope of work for that additional, for that contract?
No, they couldn't, yeah. We would be bound to that contract.
We just need updated plans.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Cool.
I just need to clarify, I guess I need clarification. I, I, I understand what, I think I understand what Fran's asking, and that is, they're staying. Fran, are you, are you implying that you need to, you need to see our complete report finished and presented to this board? The bond committee needs to finish their report presented to this board to make sure that it's all in line with what we want before we go back to the architects? Is that what you're saying?
I'm not sure I'm saying that. I was saying that we agreed to do a presentation to the board, the next board meeting. And so that they would be, of course, now at that point, involved in what's happening with the bond committee. The following day, if the board approves all of that and wants to go forward, if the board wants to go forward, that's the words. The board wants to go forward, then we would go forward and, and then the architects would be contacted. Um, not that they haven't already, they're supposedly, they're getting bits and pieces of what we're doing, but then they would have a product then to start working on. So the drawings and all will be coming after, not before, um, that next meeting. I understood very clearly that that was what was to happen. So I thought that, I think this is a little premature.
I guess, what's the, what's the scope that we're looking at? When we reach back out to them, what's the scope that we're looking for by reaching, in the next four weeks?
The next four weeks, my, my assumption is, the scope we're looking for is, we're re, we're restarting this work. We have recommendations, they're underway, we would like to continue use of our contract in order to get, you know, get on your calendar, present these, these questions and get moving.
Get on the calendar.
Get, get the drawings, because otherwise we're losing
Yep.
a whole month. It's, it's not intended to be, uh, trick, you know, it's not intended to shortcut our process other than we, now we know we have this air quality thing, we know we have, you know, we have a timeline. And if we cannot lose four weeks to bring the attention of the project back to the architects who we already have a contract with, it would be helpful. So that was a di, a discussion that was, um, has been circled around a couple of times.
I, I, just to chime in, I'd be fine with that. I mean, obviously, time is of the essence and we, why waste four weeks? If they're just gonna, we're gonna make the call, you know, these are, this is coming down the pike. I mean, I don't see anything wrong with that.
I don't see any action needed, cause you've already have the contract, uh, the architect in place, you've already used them. The question was, can we continue on that same contract? Now I'm a little, you know, confused, because I never heard that before. Tonight's the first time I heard that. So I would assume that everything was in play, but the architect, and we're just gonna move forward now, once he gets the information we're gonna give him, or them, excuse me, and they're going to, uh, create something for us. That's my vision of what's how, how that's supposed to be happening.
Yes.
So it really doesn't require board action tonight or any action, because it's already there. It's already been done.
Okay, so that was the part that was, there was some debate on, Fran, of if we have a contract already, but it was from, you know, are we allowed to, do we have to go back to the board again to use the contract?
And you're saying, no, we shouldn't?
No, I didn't get that. I, that's right. I didn't think we have to come back to the board at all. And I think, um, the treasurer, I mean, the finance director, excuse me, stated that, um, um, she wasn't sure how much money was left that would be available to us. So I thought it was just a continuing conversation that we're gonna continue on with, you know?
And I think we do have that answer now.
Yeah.
We, I think you, that, I wanna say about half, that there's still?
I have no idea, but, you know, again, that's, that's administration's, um,
Yep.
stuff, you know, I think.
So then we don't need a motion to go move forward?
No, I don't think you need a motion.
Yeah.
We're, we're good.
Yeah, I think part of the confusion was Diane and I spoke, uh, today. And then we spoke, you know, the whole reason we're having this conversation is transparency, because as you referenced, we had that meeting last night and we had a structure. And then we started talking today, well, we already have a contract with this company that was hired by the board to do architectural work, and we didn't expend all the money, should we go back to the board? And I think the whole purpose of this conversation was to get it out there in a public meeting so that everyone knows that this is what we're doing.
Oh, you're right, we, we don't, I don't know.
No, I don't think we need to do anything at this point, no.
So then let's consider that my report, just trying to be transparent and make sure we're not doing anything we shouldn't, and we don't need to?
No, I appreciate that, and that's, that's good to do. It's good to talk it out, yeah.
Perfect. Um, and so we'll look forward to bringing that, um, next month. I will, um, not belabor the topic too much, but to say we had, um, what felt like fantastic participation in these early meetings from the public. Um, we know we don't often have a big crowd, and we had to move two of our meetings into the performing arts space and the auxiliary gym to accommodate the, um, folks who came out. So that was really nice to see, um, and I've run into many people who, uh, said that they watch along online. So thank you for that participation, and we hope it continues. All right, there's no school board chair report tonight, and now I'll turn it over to Craig for superintendent report.
Thank you. Uh, new hires, Jeffrey Hamilton, mechanic in the transportation department. Joel Hongden, uh, second shift custodian at Russell School. Resignations, Lisa Durgan, special education teacher at the high school. Uh, Chanel Lee, Ed Tech Two at the Russell School. Uh, transfers, Michelle Reynolds has transferred from special education self-contained classroom to Ed Tech Two Memorial School to a Title One Ed Tech Two at Memorial School. Uh, one other item for the superintendent's report. Uh, Mr. Cop came to see me a couple of weeks ago. Uh, it was a, a good meeting. Um, it gets to, uh, orientation of new school board members. Um, when I came to this school board, we had a very seasoned school board. Um, many, I, I, there were very few people that were on their first term. Most people were on their second, third, eighth term. So I didn't spend a lot of time on orientation. Now we have one, two, three, four, five-ish, six, seven board members that have done less than two years on the school board, two years or less. And so Mr. Cop and I talked about orientation, what new board members need to, to know. As you referenced, uh, uh, Ms. Monroe, you know, you have eight thousand pages of material to read and then you have to show up knowing what to do. So I am going to send you a, all of you, a survey that talks about your first three months on the school board. What could make your orientation on, or onboarding better? With some kind of formal workshop help, with a two-hour session help? Um, um, what, what might make you, I have, uh, I have about ten rough questions so far. And then there'll be a section where you can just freestyle writing what you want to say. But I, I think it might, um, uh, I may have given you the short shrift if you're a very new board member and maybe we can do, uh, a little better for, uh, we have elections coming up in June and we'll have more new board members. So, uh, I'll be sending out, uh, that survey soon. It'll be simple and shouldn't take more than fifteen minutes, ten minutes.
Thank you. All right, so we, um, now look at executive session. If I could hear a motion to enter into executive session for discussion of the support staff contract as per MRSA 4056D.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All favor? All right, we do, um, a moment to transition to that.
Thank you, Mike, for coming.